Called to order the meeting of the Green Bay Common Council for a meeting on Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. Clerk?
Present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clerk. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So I do want to take a moment to pray for this council and this community, for this state and nation. In the days ahead, we will be tested in many ways many of us might not have ever imagined. Ask for wisdom and strength and peace for all of us gathered here today and for all members of the Green Bay community. Finally, I want to ask us all to think about people on the front lines of this pandemic, the emergency responders, public safety officers, medical professionals, and all providers of essential services. We owe them everything today, and we will owe them even more tomorrow. Thank you. Under the report by the mayor, so Director Falds, Chief Litten, and Attorney Chavez will provide in-depth explanations of issues we're handling tonight, but I wanted to provide you and the community with an update on the actions I've taken or decisions I've supported in recent days. Last week, I announced my decision to cease any involvement in public events or travel and urged my fellow citizens to take similar actions in light of the impending threat to our community. This past weekend, the Emergency Operations Center was opened in concert with the county. It was opened at a Level Four, where it remains for the time being. Chief Litten will provide more details on that situation. I consulted with Director Keywood on Sunday night and supported her fully in her decision with Transit Commissioner consultation to suspend general transit services. At Chief Litten's urging and with Attorney Chavez's assistance, I declared a state of emergency in the city of Green Bay on Monday. Also yesterday, I participated in a community update with our local health system leaders, County Executive Streichenbach, and Superintendent Michelle Langenfeld. We are all united in the steps we believe must be taken to protect our community, including limits on meeting size and strict social distancing protocols. Today, operating with the authority of the state of emergency, I closed City Hall for public business until further notice. I've also been advocating publicly and privately for dramatic changes in the way in which our election will be administered in April. As it stands, I don't believe we'll be able to staff it appropriately, and I worry about the impact this could have on our democracy. I'm exploring any and all options to remedy that situation. So this gives you a sense for the work I've been engaged in the past few days. As you can tell, I take the COVID-19 threat very seriously, and I'm urging you all to do the same. If you're skeptical, don't listen to me. Listen to the national, state, and public, local public health experts. This threat is incredibly real, and the time to act is yesterday. Finally, I recognize and deeply regret the negative social and economic consequences of the public safety recommendations we are following, which is why I have called on state and federal officials to act immediately to provide essential support to the individuals, nonprofits, and businesses who are so severely impacted. I've also called on our community members to support one another during this time of need. As always, I thank you Alders for your service, and I thank the community for the difficult work that's been done and for the difficult work that lies ahead. And that concludes my report.
We are on to the approval of the agenda. Motion made by Alder from the 8th, seconded by Alder from the 10th, to approve the agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The agenda has been approved. On to the committee of the whole. We'll begin with the informational report by Chief David Litten on emergency operations.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I did, I think we provided you the written statement that I'm going to read from today, and then I'll be happy to answer, fill in the color, and answer any questions at the end. So as you will recall, Alder Persson-Dorf submitted a communication at the end of the council meeting on March 3rd regarding the city's pandemic plan. As a result of this communication, staff immediately started to research information regarding the coronavirus, otherwise known as the COVID-19 virus. Under Wisconsin statutes, chapters 250 to 255, the health departments have jurisdiction over these matters. As the city does not have its own health department, we fall under the jurisdiction of the Brown County Health Department and their published pandemic plan. City staff has, over the last two weeks, been working with our partners in the healthcare industry on a local, regional, and statewide basis. We have been in constant contact with the four hospitals, the Brown County Health Department, the Healthcare Emergency Readiness Coalition, and the Department of Health Services, the State Department of Health Services. The city activated our Emergency Operations Center to Level Four on Saturday, March 14th, and we have been monitoring activities around the state on the Web EOC software platform. On the same date, we made our initial request for additional protective personal equipment for our first responders, including fire, emergency medical, and police services. The PPE is in short supply, and at some point in the near future, we will run out of these supplies. Additionally, all city departments have met regularly to coordinate policy and redundancy plans for critical city services. It is important to know that the COVID-19 virus originated in animals, and because of this, it is known as a novel or new virus. As such, scientists and researchers do not have the same type of data and research as the common. As such, scientists and researchers do not have the same type of data and research as the common strains of flu. The implications are that all of the science is emerging in real time and subject to change on an hourly basis. The real impact is that we don't know, don't have a known preventative vaccination. Because of these facts, one known preventative measure is to practice social distancing, and the recommended distance at this point is six feet. The experts also say that the virus is primarily airborne and spread through coughing or spitting. The unfortunate part is that the virus is known to have an incubation period of 14 days. Why is that important? It is important because any person who is exposed may not know that they have the virus for up to 14 days before they exhibit symptoms. And the symptoms are 104 degrees Fahrenheit temperature, excessive coughing, and shortness of breath. Those are all some of the same symptoms that you have in the common flu. During this time, the infected person continues to potentially infect everyone else that they come into contact with. This is called community spread. Some of us in this meeting could have the virus right now and not know it. This is the very reason to limit business, social, and government meetings in order to help stop the unknown spread. In fact, today, the governor has ordered that all restaurants and bars close except for carryout orders and gatherings which were initially restricted to no more than 50, which is today, as I said, on the hourly basis, been reduced to 10. It's important for the Alders to know that the region's ambulance services have instituted a no-train transport policy of non-critical potential COVID-19 patients. What this means is that, at the discretion of the paramedics, patients who are not in a life-threatening condition, though they may have the symptoms of the COVID virus, will not be transported to the emergency room. This has been mandated and directed by our doctors in charge of the paramedics and the respective hospital systems. This is being done because short of a patient needing a ventilator, there is nothing that the hospital can do for the patient. The hospitals today are at around 97% capacity here in Green Bay, and this is without the surge of patients that we know is going to get, come into contact with the virus. This is being experienced in other parts of the country right now. In these cases, paramedics will give a written set of directions to the patients to follow, and this information has been translated into various languages of our constituents. On the matter of testing, the hospitals have a limited amount of tests that they can administer. Their ability, however, is increasing by the day. Each hospital is developing the kind of drive-through testing that many of you may have seen on the news in other areas of the country. The current guidance is that the test must be ordered by the patient's doctor. Once the order is issued, the patient is given instructions on where to go for the test. These procedures are not being published at this time in order to protect the integrity of the testing sites. Once the test is complete, it takes 24 to 48 hours to get these results. In regards to the emergency declaration by the city, I ask Mayor Genrick to make the proclamation in order to activate the provisions contained in Chapter 323 of the state statutes in order to support the health departments in a timely, i.e. rapid manner because of the ever-changing state of the virus spread. In closing, all of you have been sent a link to your city email account that will allow you access to the current city emergency operations plans, which includes emergency contact information for the department heads. I ask that the contact information not be shared with anyone outside of the council. I would suggest that you become familiar with the documents, as they will be our guiding procedures in this health disaster in the coming days.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief? Any questions on the line? Okay, so we'll move on to Alder from the 8th.
Mr. Mayor, and if it's the wrong place... Let me know. It might be under the next one. I was just wondering about, and this might fall under county too, but I'm getting asked a lot about this as far as if we do run out of hospital room, you know, what's the next step? Is that part of the plan, or is that something the chief could address?
Again, you know, we've been having those discussions with the local hospitals, and of course, the county health department, again, they have jurisdiction here, but the plan will be going forward. You know, patients that are in the hospital right now with lower acuity, i.e. people that aren't that serious, like maybe you'll be in there with gallstones or kidney stones or something of that nature, which can be managed at home with pain care. Those patients, I think, will be released earlier than normal. In every, in any case, it is possible. All of the elective surgeries are being canceled as we speak. All of those minor procedures will have been canceled, and so they are making room, as we speak, in the hospitals for the coming surge. And I know that they have, you know, some, you know, contingency plans. I won't go into, I mean, every system is a little bit different, but they are planning to take on as much as humanly possible, given staff and physical locations. So right up to the point of potentially having patients in the hallways.
Thanks, Chief. Do we, and again, you know, in conjunction with the county, of course, because they have the health department, do we have any recovery areas, you know, once you're kind of good over the hump, but you're still within that, being infectious? You don't need to be in a hospital, perhaps? Is that part of the plan?
Well, part of the guidance from the CDC and from the local healthcare partners would be to go home and isolate yourself and your residents. So pick a, you know, if you know that you've got these symptoms, would be to pick a room in your house where you're going to go to and you're going to stay there on your own, where family members can bring you food and, you know, sustenance and things to get by on, but literally to limit your contact even with family members at that point. So again, with the 14-day, you know, period where you may not know that you have these things, you know, we could be exposing, you know, each other all day, every day right now, but once you do have it, the great majority of cases, I don't want to, I don't want to sound the sky's falling, but the great majority of cases, people are going to recover from this and be fine. It's people that are over age 50, and really, they're fine. And now, you have a little bit more over age 60, but with underlying conditions of, you know, heart problems, with respiratory problems, if you've got diabetes, or if you've been exposed, if you have cancer, or a history of pneumonia, those are five really high key risk areas that we are trying to isolate for sure.
Thanks, Chief. I did talk to a couple of firemen, and we have some pretty good equipment. Are we good in that aspect with our equipment?
Yeah, as I said earlier, we have a limit, we do have a limited supply of personal protective equipment. We did make the request Saturday morning, first thing, for additional supplies. I will tell you that there are no additional supplies anywhere in the United States that can be had. Now, there is something called the National Stockpile, Strategic Stockpile, and we've been told that as late as 5:00 this evening, that if that is released, at most, we might see 10 sets. So we are making provisions to do anything and everything that we can to provide protection to our people. We're screening calls at the dispatch center. We are limiting our contact even with patients, those that are known to have these symptoms. There's a set protocol for that. We are, I have restricted anybody that's working as a paramedic in a department. On Friday, actually, last week, I restricted all of our medics over 50 that have any of these underlying health conditions. I have restricted them from riding on the ambulance at this point. I will tell you that we have 14 fire personnel, fire EMS personnel, under quarantine already, and so that's concerning to us, and so I'm trying to limit the spread even within our own ranks so that both police, fire, public works, all of the people that you would consider to be public safety, that we can extend this thing out as long as we can, you know, so we have provisions for reducing manpower, for going down to one paramedic on an ambulance, for running basic life support ambulances. The police have had the same kind of procedures in place. We're meeting with them daily. We're discussing everything that's coming out on an hourly basis, and we're adapting and adjusting on the fly. And, you know, in the end, we're going to provide emergency service, and we're going to continue to do that. We'll get through it, but these are challenging times.
Thank you, Chief.
Alder from the 10th.
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, I was just going to ask you about folks that might be coming into the Green Bay and Brown County from overseas. Is there anything above and beyond that we should need to know about that as far as what these folks, what will happen to them when they come to the airports, or is that out of, is that something you can answer? Or is that Brown County?
Yeah, that'd be directly under direct control of the Brown County Health Department. I'm not, I do not know at this point if they've instituted any kind of restrictions at the airport or testing procedures with temperatures and so forth. I do not know the answer to that, but I will find out and get it out to you.
Okay, that's good. I suppose this might be Brown County as well, talking about, you know, other facilities, that if the hospitals are overworked, that there might be other makeshift facilities for, for folks. Is that something that you talked about with the county exec or mayor?
It's definitely a concern of the health systems in the area, and something that they've been talking about with public health. You know, out in California, I know some other areas, they've requisitioned motels, dormitories to provide those kinds of services or that kind of shelter. So it's definitely a possibility in this area.
I guess I was just kind of surprised to hear that it's 97% of capacity right now. That seems high to me, but you know...
The way that Dr. Rye described it was a pandemic on top of a seasonal epidemic of the flu. So, you know, this is what we encounter many times, but we've got a pandemic on top of it.
Wow. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Alder from the 12th.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you had mentioned that paramedics would not be transporting folks to the hospital to get tested. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, that's correct. So we've instituted the no-transport policy for those folks that are not in life-threatening conditions. So if we get called there and the screening from the dispatch, we're going, we're responding, first of all. Understand that. And we're going there and we're doing, you know, the initial care that we normally would, but if the patient presents with the symptoms of the COVID virus, there's not anything, we don't want them taken to the, the hospitals don't want them brought there, because if you get into a situation where you bring them in, even in a negative pressure room, they can't use that room now for two hours after that. They have to, they have to sanitize the room. They have to have so many air turnovers and so forth. So the best guidance for those folks that are not in life-threatening situations is they'll call their, they'll be referred to call their own doctors. The doctors will refer them to a test, testing site. They'll get their test, and then they'll be told to go home and quarantine themselves and/or isolate on a case-by-case basis. So again, we are at the tip of the tip of the tip of the iceberg right now.
What are, what are some sorts of things that you believe the paramedics or firefighters are going to be asked to do in the coming days and weeks and months that go outside of what we normally have them do?
Well, I think just knowing that how contagious this virus is and the fact that, you know, we're sworn to be out there and we're going to do our jobs, and everybody's committed to doing so, you know, it's just, I guess, the mental wear and tear of things, and we're just trying to keep a, you know, keep a pulse on that. We've done everything that we can do to limit the exposure. We can't, you know, to limit it, but we can't eliminate it. And so, you know, we just have to, you know, try to keep as many people healthy as we can and keep them out of quarantine, keep them out of isolation, so that our pool of emergency workers doesn't keep dwindling to the point where we are really seriously overtaxing any, you know, smaller group.
Yeah, thank you.
Alder from the 11th.
Mayor, I'm going to ask the chief, are they utilizing the Veterans Facility on the East Side? Veterans Hospital, are they going to utilize that as well?
We are not at this point. We are, as a fire department, not utilizing the Veterans Facility at all. I don't know if that's a consideration by the Brown County Health Department, but I will tell you that on a routine, regular basis there, anything that's above a routine doctor visit there, and any kind of condition that might be life-threatening or any kind of condition that's even above normal routine, we get called to transport those folks to the hospital anyway. So while it's called a Veterans Hospital, it doesn't have full service.
Thank you. That's my only question. Thank you.
It's Alder. Alder from the 4th. Alder Galvin?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, we can.
I can hear you all.
I'm trying to ask the chief, why we have, what happened that we have 14 paramedics or EMTs on isolation now?
Alder Galvin, I heard your question. So that's not due to any, that's not due to any patient exposure at this point, because anybody that's getting screened, we are, our employees are wearing the proper gear. That is all due to many of, all of them, in every case, were either on vacation and traveling via the airlines, in areas of hotspots, and/or have come home and have reported to be sick with various symptoms. Whether or not they related to COVID or not, if they were traveled by, if they were traveling by commercial means, they have been quarantined.
Thank you.
Alder from the 9th.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Litten, thank you for your overview of what your department's doing, and thank you, obviously, for the very risky work that you and your team are doing. Just a couple of questions. You had mentioned, you know, the 97% related to hospital occupancy. Do you know what the average capacity would be on any given moment?
I do not. I think that, you know, the mayor addressed the fact that, you know, influenza A is rampant in the Green Bay area, in our region right now, and that absolutely has to do with some of the hospitalization utilization, for sure. But I don't, I would, I would guess, and this is just a guess, that they're probably typically throughout the year in a 75 to 80% rate.
Okay. And Mayor, I would invite you to respond to this as well, because I think both you and chief could potentially have some insight into this. When we talk about our role as a city and the county's role when it comes to public health, could you maybe just provide us a little bit of overview, I guess, where, sort of where the county's responsibility stops and where the city starts?
Yeah, well, like the chief mentioned, you know, the county is the provider of public health for the city of Green Bay. So in this emergency situation, they are really driving the train. The Public Health Department over at the county is sort of the primary mover. They're most experienced in this area, and so as a result, they have the highest responsibility. But chief, fill in the dots there.
Yeah, I would just add, Alder, that, you know, the Health Department has the primary role in this. We are a secondary role, but I will tell you that all of the emergency services in the county, meaning all of the fire departments, police departments, all of us bring a certain level of expertise in emergency management. We work in a unified command structure. We are very competent in those areas. We have really great, smart, experienced people who can stand up in the Emergency Operations Center and be a great aide to the Health Department. And starting tomorrow morning at 8:00 is exactly what we will be doing on a limited basis, and as, as we roll into this event going forward, that will become more and more, to a greater extent, will be, will have more agencies and more representatives from every shareholder, basically, in the city and the surrounding areas and the Emergency Operations Center.
Excuse me. So when you talk about that Emergency Operations Center, how frequently is, I guess, is that group of individuals meeting?
Well, right now, we're just, we're doing everything via telephone, so virtual meetings. We've been doing that since, basically, last Friday. We've been in contact with, again, our health partners, the hospitals, the regional HERC, which is basically a group of all the different kind of health providers, meaning the nursing homes and things of that nature. But we'll be face-to-face, or we'll have some, again, we're trying to limit exposure to each other as well. So there'll be a limited number of people actually in the Emergency Operations Center, and there'll be some clearance criteria before you go in. And then we'll have other agencies that will be virtually represented via either a Zoom broadcast or through just a teleconference.
Okay. And Mayor, again, I would also invite you to share your feedback on this next question, including Chief Litten, because I know that both of you have likely been meeting with a lot of our healthcare professionals in the last few days. What are they telling you that maybe we're not hearing in the media, and what are those bits of information, I guess, that could help the public become more informed about the severity of this, of this situation?
I don't know that they're telling us a whole lot that's unique, just echoing the concerns of, you know, officials with the CDC and with the State Department of Health Services and local public health, which is that, you know, this is a very serious illness. It's spreading very rapidly in certain communities. We do not have community spread here. That's been identified in Brown County, but it exists in Madison, Milwaukee, or Dane County, rather, Milwaukee County and Kenosha County, and cases in counties beyond that. The biggest concern that Dr. Rye and Chris Wuleski and other health system leaders have voiced from the beginning of the conversations that I've had with them, again, is to the chief's point about capacity. And it's a little bit of a euphemism. It doesn't explain exactly what we're talking about here, but we're talking about hospital beds. More importantly than that, though, we're talking about ICU beds, ventilators. In the communities that have been most dramatically impacted by COVID-19, they're making very difficult decisions about who has access to ventilators and who does not. So it's incumbent upon us, I feel, as leaders, to model what is appropriate behavior. That's why I've taken such dramatic steps to limit public gathering, and I would just call on you all to try to do the same thing, because, you know, oftentimes, it's too late in these situations before we act. We need to act while it feels too early. And again, that's what I've been trying to model, and I would encourage you all to model that for your constituencies, to send that message to the Green Bay community that it feels like an overreaction. I understand that, but the overreaction is necessary now.
Okay. And then maybe the last question I would pose, at least related to this topic, and it's a nice segue, Mayor, into the context of the question, which is, I feel like you're sort of seeing two different camps of people, right? Those that are, I don't want to say overreacting, but they're sort of like categorized, right, in that camp, and then those who are maybe underreacting. I mean, obviously, we're limited in terms of, everybody sees the same data, right, that's out there, and just people are extrapolating it in different ways. What advice or guidance, I guess, would you provide to the general public that maybe we haven't heard again that helps, I guess, better inform those individuals, maybe, that aren't seeing this the way that you and your administration is?
I mean, again, it's really important for people to listen to the experts, the public health officials. Politicians, not necessarily the most trusted sources always. So recognizing that, I've been encouraging people to, you know, to listen to what the experts are saying. This is not my opinion. This is really what we're getting from public health and public safety experts, and, you know, the easiest shorthand is cancel everything. We're not good operating in gray areas. We're better when people tell us on or off, and I think it's off at this point. We really need to radically reduce any kind of social interaction that we're engaged in, and the sooner the better.
Have you received any indication from state or federal agencies regarding how long the public should expect to be in that off position?
No. No, it's going to be a really long haul, I think.
Has, I guess, is it a phased turning off based on maybe what other communities have experienced, or does it, or is it literally like a switch, where it's like, okay, we're good now?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not the expert in this area. I don't know exactly when, you know, we'll be fully off, but it's happening quickly. you know, we'll be fully off, but it's, it's happening quickly in other areas of the country. Shelter-in-place orders have come down in, I think it's seven counties in Northern California. There's a pretty significant debate about that in New York City right now. Those are the biggest hotspots, but, but it's, it's, it's everywhere. I think it's in every state, or has been identified in every state but for West Virginia last time I saw. But it's, it's coming everywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Dorf on the line?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm not getting anything. I'm sorry. My, my question, if you can hear me, I, I can't hear you, is to Chief Litten. Chief Litten, do you need anything from us? Do you need anything financially from us?
Well, Alder Dorf, I understood your question to be, do we need anything financially from you? And I will tell you that we are procuring equipment, certain things. I will tell you that I've ordered a couple of different devices for use in the back of the ambulances as well as our squad cars. Those pieces of equipment are in the area of about five thousand dollars each, plus the fluids to, to use them. But basically, that's an electric, electrically-charged atom or ion that, that would disinfect completely one hundred percent the back of the ambulances and, and the squad cars. They're a couple of weeks out. I've already made the order. Obviously, we didn't budget for these kind of things, so under the emergency declaration, you know, we have the ability to procure equipment and supplies. We don't take that as being a wide-open checkbook by any means. That would just be one example of, you know, moving quickly to get in line, to get the things first rather than last. And that's part of, you know, the request under the emergency declaration is to be able to move swiftly on items of procurement, such as that if we were to find personal protective equipment that, let's say, a vendor had a minimum order on that would exceed our statutory, you know, legal ordinance of twenty-five thousand dollars. Those are the kind of things that we may have to act swiftly on in order to get in the front of the line. So that would be the only thing, you know, there's, there's going, all the departments are tracking personnel expenses related to, so in our, in our area, you know, we've got quarantined folks, it's creating overtime, so we're tracking those expenses. We are tracking all of our time that we have in this. We are tracking anything additionally that we're doing with the hopes that, at the end of this, under the Stafford Act, the federal Stafford Act, that we'll be able to recoup seventy-five percent of our expenses.
You know, as the chair of finance, I want, I want you to know that I'm available. I appreciate this remote meeting. I wish all of this could have been done remotely, and maybe we need to practice a little bit more. But I think it's very important that as elected officials, we model what we are asking our citizens to do. And that is to socially distance from each other and to not be in contact with each other. So Mayor Ganrick, thank you for this meeting, and I hope that in future meetings, we should be acting as role models. Thank you. That's all I have for right now.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the seventh?
Did you say seventh? There was an F on.
Yes.
Okay. Chief Litten, once the COVID-19 hit hard, and your staff is working overtime like crazy to stay on top of it, and also, if you know about hospital personnel as well, is there a plan to provide support for everybody's family?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think.
Part of that discussion will be held later in the agenda with sick leave policy and things of that nature. You know, we are doing everything we can, you know, internally to make sure that our employees are cared for and their families. And, you know, again, uncharted territory altogether. We're worried that, you know, let's just say that we decided that we were going to offer daycare for our employees' kids so that they could be at work, and then we've got, you know, a, a group of the children here, and then one carrier, which then infects the rest of the children who go home to the forty families and infects my first responders. So that's the kind of serious nature of this. While it's not going to affect the kids, what we know of right now, in a, you know, permanent fashion, they could spread. They could be, you know, we consider them little aircraft carriers. They could carry the virus back to all of our first responders. So we're really dealing with this on a case-by-case basis. We're trying to, you know, employees are able to trade their shifts and move around and, and do things of that nature. They're going to be able, hopefully, to use sick time judiciously to, when the need is apparent for daycare, for childcare, and all the schools have been canceled for the foreseeable future. These are all concerns that we have, but all concerns that we will overcome. I don't have an absolute answer for you right now, but I can tell you that we're working at it.
And I wonder if anybody's kind of thought of maybe, like, you know, sort of like the summer camp, that the kids could be just, before things get bad, you know, send the kids all off to, we could figure out some kind of area or areas where perhaps, you know, they, they keep a month holiday, so to speak. But it's just, you know, I'm sure you, you work it out. I was just curious how that was going. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the tenth?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, I had just another question. You know, we're talking about being screened as far as the emergency personnel, not just for the fire department but for the county as well. Was there ever any talk about folks in the community, volunteers to help ease the workload in any way, shape, or form? Is there anything that was discussed at all, something like that?
Yeah, again, under the provision of Chapter 323, which is the emergency declaration that is before you today, we do have the provision to direct volunteer personnel to assist in those endeavors, those that may be trained. That'll be, again, something that we can work in conjunction with the county health department to, to put into place. So I will tell you that all of, you know, all of the healthcare workers, nurses, doctors, RNs, LPNs, I mean, all, every single aspect of the healthcare system, from the first responders all the way up to, you know, the, the brain surgeons, are activated and involved in this. And so there is a finite number of folks that can be put into use. And again, this is all over the country, so it's not like we're going to have the Calvary ride in and save us here, either on a state or federal level. So, you know, we're doing everything we can within the constraints and the finite amount of people that we have in order to, you know, you've heard the term flatten the curve, so to extend it so that it doesn't exceed our capacity. Might take a little longer for it to get out of here, but it won't exceed our capacity, and that's really the goal of all these provisions that were taken here, to keep us under the, the healthcare system capacity.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. And I reiterate what some of the other Alders have said. I appreciate everything that your department and the other departments have done to work on this issue.
It, it's a citywide, you know, I want to make sure that everybody understands that, you know, every single city department has been actively involved in this, working hard, collaborating, and, and covering the bases, and everybody's had great ideas and suggestions, and really, teams come together real well. So I want to make sure that everybody else gets credit where it's due.
Thank you for that. That's all I have.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin on the phone?
Thank you. Chief, I, I know older people are more at risk, but has there been any thought about contacting recent retirees and have them fill in, in positions which would put them in contact with the public but where it could free up other personnel? And this would also be for the, the police department.
Alder Galvin, honestly, we had not thought of that, that position, but certainly a, a, a topic that is worth doing some research on. So appreciate your comment there.
And she was recently, in fact, all people whose licenses have lapsed there, medical people, they've been contacted by the state and told that they're offering a very easy way for them to get relicensed so that they can get back into the healthcare system to help out during this crisis. And I thought, you know, that might be something we could do with police and fire here.
Yeah, I think that's a really good suggestion and something that we can certainly talk about with our friends and partners in the police department. And, you know, we'll, we'll get at that first thing in the morning.
Thank you. Thanks, Alder. All right, so we're going to move on to item two, which is discussion of the emergency preparedness plan for COVID-19. Director Foltz can give us a sense for what we've been doing here as an organization to accommodate our employees in this difficult time.
Well, good evening. Thanks for meeting on such short notice. So the purpose of our plans, the plan I'm looking at is the city of Green Bay Preparedness Plan for COVID-19. So the purpose of that plan is to minimize the impact of COVID-19 on our employees in the, in the community. Obviously, the, the safety and well-being of our employees and public is very important to us. We're doing everything we can to take other precautions to minimize the spread of COVID-19. It's also to mirror our emergency declaration, and it's a communication piece for our employees. So once we adopt our emergency, emergency declaration tonight, we'll update this policy and submit it to our employees. Chief Lynn talked a lot about the background of the coronavirus and the impacts, so I'm not going to talk about that, even though our, our plan does address that. You'll see that the plan does talk about how our employees, what steps they can take to disinfect their area and what our maintenance staff can do. We did have a, a harsh flu season, so for good or for bad. We have communicated this to our supervisors and employees several weeks ago, if not months ago. So the good thing about that is our employees are well-educated on what to do to try and prevent the spread of COVID-19 and the flu. So if we can look at page two, it's about the bottom third, there's a paragraph that starts, "In the event there is COVID-19 outbreak in our community." We just heard that the mayor stated that right now there is not an outbreak in our community. And if you look at what the state government and the federal government has been doing, they're trying to be proactive before the outbreak begins. So we have listed four things that the city is going to do to be proactive. And to back up a little bit, I took that language from the CDC that talked about, if there's an outbreak in our community, these are steps you can take, but obviously, we're being proactive before that occurs. So what we're doing right now is we're limiting the direct contact we have with coworkers and with the public. So our meetings, we're trying to be, having those be done through the telephone, video conference, or through email. We're excluding individuals from employment. And really, that's a practice that we do all year round. If someone is sick, we tell them to stay home. If someone is sick at work, we tell them to go home. But right now, more than ever, we need to continue to do that. So if an employee has flu symptoms or coronavirus-like symptoms, we'll send them home. Also, if someone has just traveled the past week or two weeks, we have sent them home as well, depending on where they went and if they've used public transportation, like an airplane or, or metro or something like that. And then we're also taking the steps of, we're making as many employees as possible telecommute and work from home. And what we do on that is a, it's a case-by-case basis. So we have to look at the job and the requirements of the job, and then look at, do we have the equipment to allow the individual to work from home? And if they can, we're telling people to work from home to help try and stop the spread with our employees and to the public. And then the last one is looking at the determination of essential and nonessential functions, where nonessential func, or nonessential employees would stay home. We haven't really had too much of a discussion on that at this point, and I, I think we might get into that area. I know transit has not, they've shut down their service quite a bit, so we had to look at what we can do for those employees who are not currently working. So I'll go quickly through a kind of recap. So there's some portions that talked about internal, external meetings. We talked about how we're trying to limit direct contact with, with employees. Again, I touched on the telecommuting. And if we look at exclusion from employment, what I want to touch on is, right now, we have returning to work is if, is after you get a negative test, or if you get a provider to, to provide a return to work. And I'm not sure how accessible our tests are for, for residents. So I think we have to look at options of, if an employee does not have symptoms for fourteen days, then I think we, we may be willing to allow them to return to work. I'll have to touch base with the mayor and Chief Litten on that. But one of the, I guess, concerns we have, and Chief Lynn talked about, is if you do not have to go to a provider, we don't want you to go to jam up their system and, you know, take away beds or any medical equipment that could be used for someone who actually needs it. So we have to work on that and continue to monitor what we want to do. But one thing I really want to focus on is the leave benefits and payroll consideration. And this is a pretty important aspect for employees, and I think it's important to alleviate some concerns that we have for our staff. So right now, the federal government is looking at legislation that could help employers, I think more so like small businesses and the government, which would be, which would be us, to pay for employees who are unable to work due to the coronavirus. And I think the phrase was they're going to move with warp-like speed. I don't know what that means, if that's tomorrow or next week or a month from now. But we're going to have to wait and see what that legislation is passed until we know exactly what the direction is. But so far, what we've done in this plan is we've mirrored what the proposed legislation was this past weekend. So we are looking to offer paid leave in situations where employees diagnosed with COVID-19, they're caring for a family member who is diagnosed with COVID-19. And the definition of family member is going to be a little broader in the proposed legislation than it is for FMLA. And then caring for a child because of school closing, and then also caring for a child because of daycare closing due to COVID-19. And then also, pay leave for someone who is asked to stay home because of symptoms or travel. What this policy at this point doesn't address, and because we said it's a very fluid situation, we're updating it as we go, is, and what I'm also asking that we incorporate into our emergency declaration, is to continue full pay for employees who are asked to stay home because their responsibilities are not needed, because of services that are not being offered to the public, and to prevent them from contracting or spreading the illness. So what I mean by that is, right now, our employees, it's not like if we ask them to stay home, or if they come to work on a limited basis, it's not like they have zero work to do. They have plenty of work to do, and we do have work for them, work for them to do. It's just that the responsibilities are going to be diminished. And when they're diminished, what that means is, you know, they might not get to forty hours a week, one week, but then the next week, they might get to forty hours. So it's going to be pretty, it might fluctuate here and there. So to kind of recap, what we're looking for to amend our emergency, excuse me, emergency declaration would be to mirror what's been proposed in legislation, which is continuing full pay for employees who are sick with the coronavirus, caring for someone who is sick with the coronavirus, quarantine because of the quarant, because of the coronavirus, or taking care of a child because of daycare or school closing. And then the second piece that's not in the plan right now that we're asking for to be amended is to continue paying benefits for employees who may not be able to have enough work to fill forty hours a week based on the responsibility to the public. And I really want to stress that this is not affecting a lot of our employees. This is really affecting the employees who are working at the front desk or working as inspectors. And what's happening is our front desk employees, they still will be showing up to work, but they, and they'll be taking phone calls from the public, and they'll be directing phone calls and emails to the right people in their, in their department. They're also going to be providing customer service like they always do. And our inspectors, we don't want them out in the community looking at people's homes. There's kind of a risk with there with spreading the illness or contracting it. And we also don't want to maybe be throwing the book at businesses right now and trying to get them, and who might be in violation. I think they have enough on their plate at this point. But our inspectors do have enough work to work on current projects, then also new projects that may come in to make sure that the inspectors are not falling behind. So really, all of our employees at this point, they might have some responsibilities and number of hours that are diminished, but we have plenty of work for them to do. They can always work on filing and organizing in their office because we have plenty to do with that. And also, might provide, provide an opportunity for HR to provide training during this downtime, or also for employees to receive job-related training. So really, what we're asking for is, when an employee is sent home, we want them to work as much as possible. So some employees can get a couple hours a day, some can get eight hours a day. And what that's going to do is it's going to help continue our operations and services for, for the public. If we were asking employees to go home and, let's say, use their own sick leave or paid leave, they really have no reason to continue to work. But I think if we, in good faith, pay for them to be home and, you know, alleviate their concerns and the need to use their own sick leave, they can work as much as they can, be as productive as they they can work as much as they can, be as productive as they can, and continue to serve the public. So, I think that's a real benefit to doing this. And I also think it's really just, it's the right thing for us to do. I think this is a very rare circumstance that we have in front of us. And I think it's gonna be pretty tough for our employees, you know, if they're concerned about how they're gonna pay the bills or, you know, if they're gonna have benefits and, you know, if they don't have benefits, how are they gonna pay for treatment? That's gonna be a real difficult and stressful situation for our employees. So, what I'm asking for is that we can amend our emergency declaration to allow employees to receive full pay and benefits throughout the emergency declaration. There is, in the legislation right now, possibility that we could get reimbursed for that payment from the federal government. So, we'll see what happens with that. But I think if we continue to wait for that legislation to be passed before we enact anything, then we might be leaving our employees holding the bag. So, that's really what our plan is right now, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
And I would quickly just echo everything that Director Folds said and emphasize one of his final points, which is that, you know, this will be an opportunity for people to think long-term about their advancement within the organization. We, like many organizations, I think, struggle to think long-term because we're in the day-to-day and accomplishing the tasks that are in front of us and necessary. So, if there is an opportunity here, it is one where it allows our department heads and our employees to think about other ways that we can improve this organization, again, think more long-term and more strategically. So, I think you will see some of those efforts undertaken. And then to also reinforce the Director Folds' final point, which is that this is a very difficult time for people across this community, for our businesses and nonprofits and individuals. That is the case as well for our employees. And I think we'd be doing a disservice to our community and to our employees if we did not support them in this really difficult time of need. We do have a question from Alder from the first. Alder Dorff?
Hello? This is Alder Dorff. Did you call, Lindy?
I did.
Yes.
Okay, I just wondered, is this the appropriate time to make a motion for that amendment? Or do we need to wait till later on to do that? Because I really approve of what our Human Resources Director Jill Fogg is doing. I think he's created a fabulous plan, and I'm very much in favor of it. So...
Alder from the first makes a motion to adopt the amendment to the emergency declaration? Do we have a second? No, a second by Alder from the fifth, I believe? Further discussion?
Yes.
Yep, no, that's a good point. So, any further discussion on items two and three? We haven't gotten to item four yet. So, any further discussion on item two? Alder from the ninth.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Folds, two things. One, you had mentioned, and I apologize because I think you guys may have sent that policy late this afternoon and I haven't seen it. But you mentioned that there was a broad definition of extended family. Can you explain what that means? And what is our, and if you could also tell us what our current policy is?
Sure. So, when I talked about the broad definition of what family member is, I was talking about the proposed legislation that's in the federal government. And it's just broader than what FMLA is, and I don't know if it's gonna stay in the in the bill or not. But I think what it included was more family members outside of FMLA. So, it could be someone who is a grant. Trying to look at the difference here. It just extended it to more family members. It's like a senior citizen that you're taking care of, or maybe someone outside of immediate family you can take care of. So, currently, right now, our our policy is for immediate family members. I believe it's for parents. It doesn't include someone like an uncle or a cousin or something like that. So, the broader definition in the federal legislation, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact answer because I don't know if it's gonna get passed or not, just is outside of what our current one is.
Okay, thank you. So, again, just to clarify, that particular comment was referring to the federal legislation and not anything locally that you're referring to?
That's correct.
Okay. And actually, my other comment, I think I'm gonna hold for when we talk about the next item, so.
All right, Alder from the fourth. Alder Galvin?
But it's been hard to understand you and when other Alders are asking questions, I don't know if they're not speaking into their mics or what, but was there a timeline on this as to how long this policy will last, or is this gonna be our policy moving forward?
That's April 17th. April 17th is the date in the emergency declaration. Further questions? Alder from the tenth.
Thank you, Your Honor. Director Folds, thank you for the work you've put into this with your department and others. You were talking, and the mayor mentioned too, that you were talking about the opportunity to think long-term about ongoing improvements in various offices, departments, the city at large. This might be a simple question, but can the council and such be kept up to date on these improvements and efficiencies that might come forth from all this? That's all.
Yeah, and I'll have to echo what Chief Lynn said. This is definitely a team effort, and I have, we have to thank Alder Dorff for asking for us to put this together and kind of getting this going on this because there was a lot of work put into it by HR, but also all the department has that had input on it. So, we can keep the common council up to date. What I can tell you right now is I did talk to Director Chivas on how some drivers can come into work right now and get some training that they weren't able to get to throughout the year. And I think what we're gonna try to do is much training for job, excuse me, job-related training for our positions, and then also, I think, just catch up on work that's been backloaded a little bit.
Thanks, Alder. Further questions on this item? Alder from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, just so I understand, this will be in effect until April 17th, when the current emergency protocol. One thing, and...
Unless extended.
Unless extended. One thing I will just say, and I'm obviously an employee of an organization, as are many people I represent, family, you name it. And so, what we can extend to our employees is very important because we all rely on a paycheck one way or another. And to make their lives easier during this situation is definitely something we should be in favor of. One thing, as we move forward, to keep in mind that the reality is if the federal government doesn't step up and provide reimbursements, that we still have to, you know, generate revenue in some way. And so, for a lot of businesses and a lot of property owners who perhaps are ready to pay taxes in July, their half of their property tax, if they're not able to make those payments or revenues that come in, we'd have to reevaluate it at that time. So, I know I'm looking into the future, but that's just a consideration to keep in mind. Revenue might hurt. The loss of revenue might hurt the city going forward if this thing extends into July or August. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good point, Alder. And that's why I've also, in my mayor's report, mentioned the fact that I've called on our state and federal leaders to really step up and in a unified way provide support to businesses and community members here, because this is a, this is going to be a very difficult time economically and socially. And as an entity, we just don't have the resources to keep up. The federal government's really the only one that is capable of doing that. So, that's a, it's a good point. Further comments or questions on two? I believe three has also been sort of addressed, but any specific questions on that item? Alder from the ninth.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know it's embedded with the proclamation with the revised file that was sent out, but I think this might be an appropriate place maybe to pose this question to Director Folds. As we have the discussion about continuing to compensate employees at full value, which would obviously be on the, sort of, the taxpayer's clock, if you will, has there been any discussion about the utilization of unemployment compensation and how that factors into this equation? And has the state in particular made any type of statement or decision regarding how that, modifications that they might make to how that process works?
Yeah, I'll just say quickly that the governor did, as part of his announcement today, alluded to some changes in the UI system that could be of potential benefit. But discussed that with Director Folds, and he had some concerns with with what that, the impact that that might have on our employees. So, Director...
Mayor, if I could just make one additional comment before Director Folds. And I know that unemployment typically, you know, will pay at a lower percentage than the compensation. What I'm wondering, particularly at the state level, if they might entertain a suspension of that temporarily so that you could use that fund, you know, for the 60% or whatever that they normally cover, and that the employer could then, you know, cover the balance so that it sort of helps relieve some of that pressure on the local municipality in the interim. So...
Yeah, it's definitely a possibility. But Director Folds?
Yeah, I definitely think that'd be a unique situation. I guess how I, you know, reading this, I just read this this afternoon about the unemployment. I think, and I'm reading into this, it might be geared towards a lot of small businesses and restaurant owners, bar owners, because it came out at the same time that they're being closed, that they're able to get into unemployment earlier and kind of waive the waiting period. And I think it then helps the small business to not have to then pay to keep them on. That's what my guess is. But I think your idea of trying to work with the state to offset some of the pay for employees would be great. A concern I have is whether or not an employee who would be accepted for unemployment could then still have benefits through the city without having to go through COBRA. I think that'd be a big impact on the employee.
Okay. So, again, and I under, you know, and of course, we've got sort of two trains of thought here, and I think it's worthy to talk about both. And of course, one of those falls into the state's court, which is how they manage the state unemployment. You know, the problem with that particular item is that small business owners, particularly LLCs, generally would not be eligible to receive those benefits. And of course, the state will have to take that issue up. But as it relates to to the city again, it's, for me, it's trying to recognize, I mean, state unemployment, that fund, if you will, I mean, we've contributed to that. So, it would be nice, again, if we could lobby state officials for a suspension of how that is traditionally managed, so that we might be able to utilize it, that if we do make the decision to offer 100% emergency paid sick leave, that that fund could potentially be used to help offset that immediate expense on the city's annual budget. So, I guess I would just make that request, whether it comes from the mayor's office or otherwise, that we, that we make that request of the governor's office.
Absolutely. Any further comments? All right, we will move to move to item four. Discussion with possible action on the proclamation declaring state of emergency for the City of Green Bay COVID-19 response. We did have a motion and a second to adopt the amendment. Is that true, Alder Dorff?
Yeah, that is true. That is true. I mean, I could actually adopt the whole thing and adopt the amendment however we want to do that.
We need the amendment. We need the amendment? Yeah. Yep, we still need the amendment, Alder.
Okay, so we vote on the amendment first, okay.
So, Alder moves. Is there a second again? Alder from the first moves for adoption of the amendment to the emergency declaration, seconded by Alder from the fifth. Any further discussion? Yes. Attorney Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just briefly, I wanted to put on the record what the amendment is going to state. So, there are a number of whereas's. The first one that's modified just reflects today's date and the update to the confirmed cases and the counties. That is up to 72 from the 33 that we had on Sunday. There is a new whereas statement stating that, or modified whereas statement saying that because of emergency conditions, Mayor Granreg declared a local state of emergency for the city on March 16th until the council was able to meet. A new whereas statement saying that on March 17th, the council met to consider this matter. A new whereas statement saying that the city recognizes the large-scale medical events can affect the health and well-being of city employees, and result employees needed to stay home. And then for the substance, there is a new number six providing for paid sick leave, as you all just discussed. And then the last major change is that this one is now a ratified proclamation by the common council and amending the action as identified herein.
Attorney Chavez? So, we do have the motion and the second to amend? Alder from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for Attorney Chavez. One thing I noticed when I was reviewing this, talks about state action, but is it necessary to include what the federal actions have been, state of emergency from the federal authorities? I know there's a mention of the CDC, but is that something that should be added?
I mean, it's really up to the council as to what they want to include in it. We are specifying the purposes for it in declaring the emergency. And so, it's entirely up to the council as to whether or not they feel additional information is warranted to be placed in here. There is no requirement that there is additional information placed.
And I understand that this was probably prepared, much of it anyways, prior to that federal declaration. I think that's quite possible, but would it be appropriate? Attorney Chavez, do you have just like a single sentence prepared or that you could offer as an amendment to explain that federal action outside of the CDC has been taken?
I can look to add some in, yes.
If you could. I don't want to disrupt the meeting, but given all of the federal actions that have been taking place and orders that now are being recommended, not recommended, but enacted, I think it would be appropriate. So, I don't, if it's okay, take a short break or wait here, whatever you think, Mayor.
I don't think that it's necessary for us to have the exact language placed into it. If you're just asking me to add a statement saying something to the lines of whereas the CDC and then federal agencies have identified numerous actions that need to be taken in response to COVID-19?
Sure. That would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Acknowledging that those details will be incorporated, we have the amendment and the motion to amend and second. Are we just taking up the amendment right now to add the sick pay? Yep. So, all in favor of that amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The amendment is adopted. Now, we're on to the declaration itself. Alder from the ninth.
Thank you, Mayor. I am looking at, under the, it's on page three, and then now there are four clauses, item number two, where it states all in-person meetings and gatherings, et cetera, et cetera. I would like to, I'm gonna move to amend this to strike elected officials. And so, the second on the floor, I would just offer up an explanation for that. I just feel it's a dangerous precedence for us to set to, in times of crisis and emergency, to needlessly restrict the ability for the elected body to meet as necessary. And so, it's for that reason I strike this, not because I think we need to get together. I think it's important for us to preserve the ability to do it if the circumstances call for it.
So, just to clarify, we're talking about point two on page three?
Correct. So, it says where meetings and gatherings involving city employees, staff, and/or elected officials are suspended for the duration of this emergency. And so, again, I'm comfortable with, obviously, your... And so again, I'm comfortable with, obviously, your office having the ability to make decisions about taking great care of our employees and staff. However, I do think, because we are directly responsible to the voting public, I do think it's important for us to reserve, preserve the ability to make that decision if we feel it's necessary to meet. My sincere hope is that we don't need to, but I'd hate to see it embedded in here that has maybe an unintended consequence that prevents us from making that decision if it's needed.
Right, so just again, to clarify this, the suggested change or amendment would not impact that second sentence with regard to meetings of the common council committees, boards, and their commissions?
Yeah, I think that's still perfectly acceptable because it says that it may be conducted remotely with access and I think that's a perfectly acceptable way to word that.
Understood. Further comments? Is that Alder from the seventh?
I don't- Um, the Alder's changed since it doesn't prohibit us from meeting. I don't understand what, why he wants that removed. It makes no sense to me since we can still meet remotely. The purpose, as I understand, is to, well, to lead and to give an example of how not be gathering in groups. But if we need to meet, we, the second sentence allows us to do that. So I don't understand how the Alder thinks having elected officials in that first sentence prevents us from meeting. I don't, I see no reason to take it out. We can still meet.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you.
Alder from the eighth?
My apologies, that was for a future comment, thanks.
Alder from the first?
It's hard to hear, did you just call from the first?
Yep.
Okay, I would also disagree with taking that out. The governor himself has prohibited meetings of more. So ability to meet remotely, we need to be setting an example for our public. They were forced to close the bars and restaurants because people were still going to, particularly the bars, in great numbers. So we need to also set that example. This does not mean we're shirking our duty as elected officials. We are not. We are here, we spent time trying to make sure everyone was connected. We're saying that we are going to model what President Trump, what the CDC, what the White House Committee has asked all Americans to do. And that is to not meet if it's not necessary. And it's not necessary. There are other ways to do this. So I am very, very much opposed to this amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the 12th?
I thought you said fourth, I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm in favor of fixing the sound? No. So one thing that I'm in favor of the amendment, and just to clarify why, the way that it reads, it's all how a person interprets it. I agree that we should now, as of now, because of the several things the governor put in place and the president, we should be meeting as a body as little as possible and when doing so, do so remotely. The way that I read this, though, is that elected officials are barred. I don't know if that's the right word, but we're not allowed to meet perhaps as individual Alders. So for example, if I have an issue that I need to consult with Alderman Johnson about or Alderman Wery or any other Alder, that the way that this reads is that I would be prohibited from an in-person meeting with another elected official. And I just don't feel comfortable doing that. Perhaps that's not the intention, but if you were to read the wording of this, you could certainly get that, get that outcome. So that's why I'm in favor of the amendment for that purpose. And furthermore, what Alderman Johnson stated, we shouldn't restrict ourselves if we have to meet. Obviously, going forward, I think we've all identified when we need to meet, it should be in the manner in which we're meeting now remotely. But I don't want to restrict our ability to have these conversations amongst elected people. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Attorney Chavez, do you want to just weigh in on that?
Yes, Mayor. So two things. So first, the way it is currently drafted, there, in-person meetings and gatherings involving city employees and staffs are suspended. Keep in mind that there is no way for the council to meet without staff being present. We have to have the clerk here. We have to have the attorney here, we have to have a number of people here. So there is no way for the council to meet in its official capacity without having staff present. Second, this was not intended to address instances where council members are talking to each other. We don't, we never ever address that other than with walking quorums. So nothing in here should, under any circumstances, be interpreted as addressing what you guys do on a personal level, regardless of whether it's an elected, in your role as an Alder, but when you're doing it personally, that is different. Your actions or your authority as a council comes when you all come together and meet, when you guys are acting as a quorum. And so that is really what this is intended to address.
Thanks, Attorney. Alder from the ninth?
Thank you, Mayor. I do think that there is a time and a place for us to have a discussion about the merits and the necessity of meeting in person. However, I don't think this document is the place to do that. There's a way for us to have that debate if somebody were to call for an in-person meeting. My fear is that this is a little bit too narrowly focused in that, heaven forbid, the city were to face a crisis that is not the coronavirus and we have now prohibited ourselves from meeting to address that crisis, which might take a stronger precedence than the current situation. Again, I feel it's just unnecessary. I think our responsibility to the public is to be able to meet as needed, to make decisions that best represent the safety and security of our residents and our community. And so I stand behind the need to eliminate this because I don't see the point of prohibiting ourselves from our responsibility in the event that an alternative crisis should strike us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the seventh?
Thank you. This is only in effect until April 17th unless it is needed to be extended. And again, I don't think it prohibits us. I think the intent is, and perhaps that can be clarified more in the language, is that we're not calling meetings with staff and gathering groups together, that we agree we should not be gathering groups together and we'll meet remotely. If we need to meet with staff, we'll do it remotely. I think that's all we're doing is agreeing that in-person meetings should be suspended at this time. And again, that's the guideline is ten people or less. I'm sorry, ten people or more. So I think that's the guidelines to be followed. I think we can use some common sense here with how we behave and the intent of the emergency declaration, proclamation. I think it's very good to proclaim that we intend to abide by guidelines that have been established by the PDP and other medical professionals. I don't think we're inhibiting ourselves in any way by doing that. So I'm still not in favor of the leading elected officials. I think it's important that elected officials are listed. We can still do our job. And this is only for, I mean, this declaration doesn't go on forever and ever, one should hope, one should think. We're not really hand-tacking ourselves in any way, size, shape, or form that I can see. I think it's important that we model, that we accept that the CDC says do not meet in large groups and we're going to follow that. We should make that a public statement, yes. So I see no reason how we disinhibit us from doing our job or that this is in any way a danger of precedent or anything like that. It's an emergency situation and we're taking emergency action. And I believe that elected officials, it's appropriate for it to be that. So I do not support them and thank you.
Thanks, Alder. So we have an amendment to exercise?
If I could take a point of clarification?
Yeah.
And I believe this would fall under that point, but if Attorney Chavez could comment, if this statement were to be retained as is, does this in fact prohibit council from meeting in person if they felt the need to do so?
The language does not actually state that anything is prohibited. It states that it is suspended and it authorizes remote attendance at meetings.
Anything further? Alder from the first?
You would say that I do not-
Not for him, and we have-
Based on what I think Chavez just said, if it's prohibited, hey, if we take it to us, but like you draw your-
Alder Johnson?
I did not.
She asks if you want to withdraw. She asks if you're interested in withdrawing?
Maybe another point of clarification on that before I would do that.
Yeah, bud.
Attorney Chavez, so what we're saying is that we are suspending for the duration, but if the council, again, for whatever unexpected reason, were to want to meet in person, what would be required for us to do that if we pass this resolution as is?
Attorney Chavez?
In that instance, I would recommend you lift the suspension, which would require a vote of the council.
How does that process work?
The council would just vote on it as a matter of course, that you, you know, it would be an agenda item, you vote on it to lift it.
So we would need a meeting to undo that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. In that case, Mayor, I do not want to, I want to keep my amendment on the floor.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the 12th?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, the light wasn't on, but what I want to clarify, I don't think that, I have a lot of respect for Alder Dorf and Alder Scannell and I know in times like this, we can, it's really trying and then we all try to do what's best, given our, the people we represent, the people we love, people in our community, we all have that. So sometimes I think as a council, if you think about it, it's almost as if we're questioning each other's motives and it's not that. I don't take Alder Johnson's motion as sort of an insult to the council that we were not consulted or that we're told we can't meet. I don't take it that at all. It's just that us, just like the mayor, has made some declarations and carried forth with decisions that were very difficult for him to reach, but he's doing so because he cares about the community and he's doing what he thinks he needs to do. Likewise, the council, I think as a group, we want to do, we want to keep what power we have to do what's in the best interest of those we represent, those we live with, our neighbors, our city employees. And the only way that we can take actions within our roles of legislative body is if we meet. And so I understand what Alder's Dorf and Scannell are saying, but if you kind of step back and look at it from a fresh set of eyes, it's just us as a body saying, we don't want to limit what our ability, our abilities to do what we think is right. We'll work together. This community's coming together in ways that are very uplifting and heartwarming and we're kind of in uncharted territory. So if you step back and say, let's just clean it up a little bit so that everyone is comfortable because we all want what's best for our community, I think it's an easier vote to make. So I support the amendment and I'm very happy with the way that the meeting's going. We're having very important discussions and I think one thing that we can take from this, at least from my perspective, is that as a city, we're kind of united. And I think we're all dedicated ourselves to serving our community the best way that we can. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the seventh?
I want to make it clear that I'm not certainly casting anyone disparagement upon anyone. I believe everyone's intentions are very good and I appreciate that there's a concern that it's going to be, it's going to somehow inhibit us from doing our jobs. I think that's great that that was brought up, but I disagree that that's a necessary concern. I think in fact that covered that we can still do our jobs with the second statement. And the purpose of the proclamation is to set forth what's necessary and what's expected. And what we expect from others, we should expect from ourselves. I feel like we're telling everybody, oh, you should meet, but we will. I mean, I don't, I think that sends the wrong message. That's the anti-proclamation. We want, in this proclamation, that people know this is what is best practice, this is what we're following and we're going to do it too. But we're going to still do our job, the second sentence lets us do that. We can still do our job. So I believe the purpose to take that out in a way defeats the purpose of the proclamation, which is to let people know, this is best practice. This is what's being recommended. This is what we're all going to be doing going forward and we should not be doing anything differently than anybody else. We can still do our job and still follow the recommendations that the PDP is providing for us. So I appreciate that Alders are concerned that we're not going to be able to do our job. I'm glad that was brought up. I would like to, you know, I just don't see how the first sentence prohibits us from doing our job. We can still do it and we can still proclaim to the public, these are the best practices and we're going to follow them too. And I think that's important. We need to lead by example. If I thought in any way that the Alder's concerns were, had any kind of validity, I would support them, but I really don't think it does. And to take the stand, well, let's play it safe, I think defeats the purpose of the proclamation. We want to proclaim best practices and we're doing it too. So that's why I'm very adamant that I think it's a mistake to take out elected officials and that we do not need to worry that we're not going to be able to do our jobs. We're going to be able to do our job. So I still appreciate everybody's concern, but I think there's another concern and that's we lead by example and that we fulfill the purpose of the proclamation. I think taking that out is sort of anti-proclamation. We're going to be going against the best practices of the PDP. I think that's counterproductive, I think, and it's unnecessary, especially with the second sentences. We can do our job. So I still, I appreciate everyone's concern and I certainly hope no one took me, mistook me as catching any kind of dispersion. I think this is a valid conversation to have, but I feel very strongly that we fulfill the purpose of the proclamation, that we're not setting ourselves above what we expect the public to do. So I still think it's unwise to delete elected officials. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the eighth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question's for Attorney Chavez. If this is not removed, could I or any other Alderman, Alder person, meet? Let's say I wanted to meet with Council President Stoyer to look at something, to review something. We do that all the time. Would I be in violation? I mean, I'd be meeting with an elected official. I think that's where some of the concern for me is also.
No, that would be a drastic reading of it, that is not intended. No, that, like I said, we don't ever monitor what the Alders are doing. I said, we don't ever monitor what the Alders are doing unless it involves a potential quorum. So no.
All right, thank you.
All right, a roll call has been requested. So we're going to use the board on... Well, why don't you restate your amendment, Alder, before we vote?
The amendment is to strike elected officials. I mean, there's some minor technical revisions for grammar's sake to make that sentence flow, but it's really about striking elected officials.
Very good. So we had a motion to amend the declaration with what the Alders stated intent there. Did we have a second? Second by Alder from the eighth. So moved by Alder from the ninth, second by Alder from the eighth, and we're going to use the board on the amendment.
Jesse.
It didn't pop up. I'm a yes. It popped up, but it must not be registered, but I'm a yes for it.
So that amendment fails six to... Seven to four? So the item before us is the Declaration as amended. We have a motion to approve. Question? Yeah. Alder from the eighth.
I do have a question on page two. Let's see here. Now, therefore pursuant to different sections of Wisconsin statutes, the city of Green Bay here declares a local state of emergency for the city of Green Bay, automatically expiring April 17th at 5:00, unless extended. Now, if we're not meeting, how would it be extended? Should we stipulate that we're meeting April 16th, or, you know, who extends it and how it's extended, right?
Just to clarify, nothing in this document says we're not meeting. It's an in-person meeting that won't take place. So just to be clear, that's not a prohibition that exists within this document. But in terms of how it would be extended, I'll defer to Attorney Chavez.
It could be done one of two ways. The first would be by proclamation of the mayor, just as happened this yesterday, until the council's able to meet again. The second would be the council meets in order to... Or calls a special meeting, or even at its April meeting, if it determines that there's adequate indications that the proclamation should be extended even that early. That is entirely up to the council at that point.
Thanks, Attorney.
First meeting's still on, tentatively. That hasn't been canceled. You're just looking at reconfiguring how we do it?
Correct.
Okay. And to that point, I do have some concerns. You know, I think we've all heard numerous times tonight that people couldn't hear discussions, and I like to hear and be able to absorb everything that's discussed, and I don't want to miss anything. Me personally, you know, I think it's my duty and right to be here at a meeting. I get if some people don't want to, but we're elected to lead, and I feel that's best for me to be here and not catch half the information unless that technology improves greatly, which it can. I mean, it's out there, but I'd prefer to be here.
Right, and I'll just respond briefly by saying I totally acknowledge that we have experienced some growing pains tonight with the technology, but I will also guarantee that things will be much improved if and when we need to meet remotely, which I do anticipate that we'll be doing. So appreciate that concern and echo, you know, the criticisms of how the meeting has gone tonight.
Some other comments. Thank you. I do want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for taking, you know, myself and others' requests to have an emergency meeting, because we were feeling... Certainly feel a little out of the loop, and I, you know, I talk to you about that. We converse frequently. You're not alone, and I told you that. We're here too. So if you need help with things, whatever it is, sending out information, a lot of us on social media, send it to us, and we'll gladly help get it out there. A good example was the bus situation. I don't think any of us liked finding out through social media or through the news that that happened. If we had been given a heads up, we could have pasted that thing all over and told people what was happening. So lean on us, you know. Perhaps during this next month or till the next council meeting, you could provide regular updates of activities taken, if major ones, and the general status, something like that, you know, since we won't be in person. But I think we all like to know what's going on, because people come to us, right? You might not be as accessible, but they come to us, and...
I think I'm pretty accessible.
Well, I don't know if everybody in the city could reach you personally. You're accessible, but I've had people about this bus situation who've called City Hall, and they get nothing, you know, probably being overwhelmed with calls on that. So they come to us. So it helps if we have the answers and we know what's going on. And to that, I'm wondering on page three, number six, the city shall... And the city, obviously, would mean yourself, shall take all further actions reasonable and necessary. I mean, do you have anything that you're thinking of that would be the next step, or are you kind of playing it by ear?
No, and I'll just address, you know, some of those comments about keeping counsel informed. I do want to make the point that I, just in the last 24, 48 hours, have sent two pretty detailed messages to counsel, updating you all on actions that the city has taken to respond to this pandemic, and I will continue to do that. Certainly would have liked more notice, you know, before moving forward with the transit announcement. But again, you know, this is not... This is not a time to second-guess decisive action that's made to, you know, to support the public safety of this community. And so I appreciate your comments about how we're all in this together, and that is well-taken and reassuring. I don't expect consensus as we move forward here. I don't think that's anything we can ever expect in a democracy, but I do really expect cohesion on the part of the council and hope that that will be the case, because I agree, I want to be moving forward with you, with the united front, sending the right messages and taking the right actions. So appreciate those comments.
Other councils have dealt with this. When you, you know, grant emergency power, you know, you're ceding our elected power to one person, right? So we're trusting that you're going to do something that most of us would agree with. So I'm hoping if before you do something, maybe you can reach out to us, you know. Are you looking at, you know, curfews, or drastic things like taking away different individual liberties like that? Those are major things that I feel uncomfortable giving up a decision on.
Yeah, no, that point's well taken. Alder from the ninth.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I had requested when the agenda was crafted was the ability for us to openly discuss any other ideas that might be out there, and I don't know if this is the appropriate place to do it.
I don't think it would be. I mean, the broader discussion was on the emergency plan that Chief Litten outlaid, and we had a pretty robust discussion about some of those issues. I don't think this is necessarily that time.
So is that a ruling that we're no longer going to be allowed to engage in discussion about things that we want to see?
There can be a discussion. It's got to be related to this document, however.
So that discussion is closed, even though those items might not have been about emergency operations?
We obviously have communications, petitions and communications left on the agenda, so if there are things that you want staff to explore, I think that's the appropriate time. Staff or myself to explore, that would be the appropriate time.
Things that would have to go through a committee and then back to council before we could actually take action on them?
If you have suggestions of items that you'd like to include in the declaration, now would be the appropriate time. If those are not things that you'd want included in this document, no, it's just not the time for that.
Interesting. All right.
Alder from the seventh.
Sir, everyone who is in the room, that yes, there's been some glitches here, but I do not feel in any way that I missed out on half the meeting, and I feel very well... Pretty well informed, been able to keep up, even though there's a few things I might have missed. When I'm there in the room, to be perfectly honest, clear transparency here, I don't always catch everything either. And as far as communication, I don't know what's on the alder's mind, but there can be a communication to the hall or to the mayor's office if he's worried about going through a committee. So just some thoughts there. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the twelfth.
Hi, I will draw my comment, question.
Alder from the tenth.
You know, I think the point that Alder Johnson brings up is a valid one, only in the sense because we're looking at a unique situation here. You know, it's unprecedented. You know, we haven't... You know, we're all a little edgy as far as trying to figure out how to move forward. And like I said, you know, like he stated, if we bring out a communication or do something that has to go through a committee, it's going to take time. And just in the last week, you know, with shutting down bus service and City Hall, I mean, that... It was quick, you know, and there's not a lot of time to do that. So with that being said, I would implore the administration to come up with something for us that we can discuss this. I realize it's not on this particular agenda, but, you know, I see some things coming down the pike that might need to be heard sooner than later. So I, you know, I throw it out to the council, and I throw it out to the administration to come up with something that we can deal with on this.
Yeah, appreciate that. I mean, we do have legal obligations to stick to the agenda. So if there were questions about the city's response, emergency response, we, you know, we had that here. If we have concerns about the declaration, now's the time to address those. So I'm not trying to squash any debate. I mean, we have to run a meeting in a certain way.
No, I understand.
Alder from the first.
I want to make a clarification. I think we have the ability to, I think, at the next meeting, or in prior, to have an item committee of the whole, where we wouldn't have to wait for something going through another subcommittee. Is that correct? I'm asking for clarification on that. Would that be a faster way for our next meeting to get something rather than having to go through a committee meeting?
Attorney Chavez.
A couple of things on that. I'm not entirely sure I heard the question, but my understanding is...
Ability to go to committee of the whole.
Oh, yes. So a couple of things. You are always able to send emergency items to committee of the whole. Second, the role of the council is to establish policy. So unless we'd be coming up with some response that we'd be imposing for the entire community, there's not going to be a lot that's primarily going to be coming from the public health, the county public health anyways. What we're addressing now is primarily the city operations, and that's mostly going to come from the executive anyways.
Thanks, Attorney Chavez. Alder from the seventh.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to make a point of clarification. I'm not sure if the council has forgotten that the transit authority gives its own authority. It is not under the mayor's authority or the council's authority. And so the decision to... Any decisions to... First, it was to cut back, right, the routes in the times, and then to shut down completely, was made by the transit authority. And I think our director does a great job, and she did what she thought was best and is best, and I fully support her. But, you know, there are some things that... I know a lot of Alders are very edgy about, you know, their responsibilities and their authority, but our responsibilities and authorities have limitations, always have. And when it comes to transit, that gives its own authority. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification. There are going to be decisions made where we're going to wish we were a part of them, but it's not our authority. So going forward, let's keep that in mind. Thank you.
Alder from the twelfth.
Yes, to Alderman Weary's point, I guess that item six, the question is, the city shall take all further actions reasonable and necessary. And I think the question is... Or the point is that we're concerned that some decisions are being made that perhaps we're not well-informed about, or perhaps we wouldn't take. And so when we get the calls and comments and criticisms on social media, we want to be able to say it's a decision that we understood how it was reached. And so with the Transit Department and Alder Scannell brought it up, so I'd like to have the same leeway from the mayor as he did. But the issue with the transit was that it was a decision that was reached. It was posted on your Facebook page. That's how I learned about it. And by then, a lot of folks were waiting for the buses on Monday mornings, or waiting to pick up prescriptions or go to work, and a lot of things that the public was really put out on. I guess so my question to you, Mayor, is, is that a decision that you... I know Alder Scannell said that it went through the Transit Commission, but... Or the Transit Director, but is that a decision that you endorsed after consultation with other Alders?
No.
So it's a decision you made independent of any...
I, again, you know, I addressed this in my comments at the head of this meeting, stating that I was consulted by the director, Patty Kiwas, who consulted with her leadership of the Transit Commission, and 110% endorsed the difficult decision that she made in the interest of public safety, the safety of her employees. But to Alder Scannell's point, that is a decision of the Transit Director in consultation with the Transit Commission.
Okay. So you made the declaration on Facebook, and then it was public, but...
I didn't make any declaration on Facebook.
Sure.
I shared the statement that was made by the Transit Commission in order to give people as much time recognizing the fact that this was an 11th-hour decision.
Sure, but do you see what I'm saying, that...
No, I don't.
Well, listen, then, the public perception is that you made that decision, and that it was posted on a social media page, and I understand that you shared the transit post, but that is how many people heard about it. And I'm not swayed necessarily by public input on social media, but I take it into account, because I think that's a fair representation of everyone throughout the city. So I'm not badgering you about the decision. You made it. You made it, and you believe it was the right decision. I'm saying that the public had a different response to that decision. They feel they were not publicly notified. I feel, as an alder, they were not publicly notified. So the Alder Weary's point is if we approve this as written, we are basically ceding our input as a counsel to you, and you state that you did not consult with any other Alders prior to making...
I didn't make the decision, Alder.
You had no input in that decision?
I already said repeatedly that I consulted with Director Kiwas and endorsed her decision 110%. I don't have the authority to make that decision, and I did not make it. I don't know how many times you want me to say this.
Well, I'll be point, because you're being blunt. My question is, is that as you make these decisions, will you be consulting with specific Alders who perhaps share your opinions, or will you be consulting us?
I will be informing counsel as much as absolutely necessary, as much as possible, I should say, in these decisions.
Informing, but not saying, hey, Alder, what do you think about this?
You know, we're getting very far afield of this declaration, but I think it's important to reiterate what Attorney Chavez said, which is that there are executive responsibilities, and there are council responsibilities. Council is the policymaking body for the city of Green Bay, and that is something that I absolutely respect 110%. But I have the obligation to act as an executive, to make decisions, many, many decisions, every single day. And I can't be consulting with every member of council before I act on something. Now, with regard to the Transit Commission's decision, the Transit Director's decision, that's something that I endorsed. However, to reiterate, it's not a decision that I made.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alder from the seventh.
I would just like to repeat, this is an emergency, and I appreciate the Alders feeling they're losing their grip on our responsibilities, and we are, and that's going to happen. We're going to be getting orders from the federal government, from the state government, that we have no... That are going to usurp our power and make decisions for us. This is an emergency, and decisions are going to be made, and they're going to be made quickly, and we're not going to have any input in on it. We just have to accept that as a fact. That's not abrogating our responsibilities. It's acknowledging...
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the fourth. Alder Galvin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just think we, we need to remind all of ourselves that, uh, moving forward through the next at least thirty days, that we have to be cognizant of the fact that, again, like you've said before, things are not normal, they're not the way they used to be. We don't have the right to be making decisions about things that we don't have the right to be making decisions about, and we need to be cognizant of that. Transit authority is transit authority, and it's not the council's decision to be making those kind of decisions. It is the transit authority's right and responsibility to do that. And there's gonna be other items that are gonna be coming up that we're probably gonna have questions about in the past that we were able to talk about back and forth amongst each other, but we don't have necessarily those rights, never did. And so, I, I think maybe it might help council if, uh, the legal department, the law department could put forth, uh, some information for us, what we do have the right to have, uh, our voices heard on, and, and what we don't have the authority to have our voices heard on, and that might help us moving forward. But I, I approve of, uh, what transit did. It was not an easy decision, it is inconvenienced, uh, probably to people that really need the most help when it comes to transportation in our community, but at the same time, I also think it's gonna be doing them the best good down the road as it relates to this virus. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Thank you for the comments. All right, do we have a, a motion to adopt the declaration?
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the first. Another roll call has been requested on this item. Use the board. One last time, Alder Nicholson. That item is adopted nine to one. Onto referrals of petitions and communications. Alder from the twelfth.
Um, no, Mayor. That was a mistake.
Apologies. Thank you. Any communications? Seeing and hearing none? Alder from the ninth?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one communication at the Redevelopment Authority for consideration and possible action on the creation of an emergency relief fund to provide loans to assist small business owners with the impacts of coronavirus. Number two, uh, I had protection policy, but I guess I'll change that to committee of the whole, to consider establishing set hours exclusive for our vulnerable populations to access grocery stores outside of general public hours. And the third item, to personnel committee, to draft a resolution requesting the state to suspend rules on utilization of the UI fund to allow employers and/or governments to access the fund in tandem with matching subsidy payments to fully compensate employees affected by coronavirus who are temporarily and/or partially displaced.
Thanks, Alder. Any further communications? Motion to refer. By, who was it by? Alder from the twelfth. Seconded by Alder from the eighth. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posenae. Those have been referred. Adjournment. Motion made by Alder from the eighth, seconded by Alder from the tenth. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posenae.